I'd like to welcome everybody that's in our audience up here tonight, and those of the joining us by television to the November the 18th Planning Board Meeting. This time we have our roll call.
Hey, Bearfoot.
Here.
Lauren and Hardy.
Here.
RJ Himby.
Here.
Anthony Herring.
Here.
Aaron Hines.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Clayton Malloy Jr.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Here.
Danny Smith. And Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Matt Nobles will not be in attendance tonight.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll stand up and we'll have our prayer by Anthony Herring on you board members.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, thank you, Father God, for allowing us to be in the United States. Thank you, Father God, for this county, Father God, and the administrators, Father God, here tonight. Bless this meeting, Father God, that everything will be done just and in order. Amen.
It is time if RJ Himby leaves in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
May be seated. I hope that everybody's read the minutes of our August 19th meeting and do have a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, this time, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've already indicated, we have a new planning board member with us tonight, Mr. Anthony Herring from District Two. We're pleased to have him on board. He's coming on for a full term. Term will expire in three years in 2018, and as you're aware, our vice chairman rotated off, Mr. Thomas Harris, so we will invite him back for a closing ceremony in December and recognize him at that time. With that, we're gonna move right in, since we didn't have our regular election of officers in October because we did not have a meeting that month. Tonight, our Assistant County Attorney, Jordan Smith, will be with us to lead you through the election of officers, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jordan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as James said, I'm gonna assist in the election of officers tonight. I'll go over a few ground rules that apply for nominations. Any member can be nominated for chair, vice chair. Any member may nominate him or herself. Nominations don't require a second, and we'll start with the office of chairman. Are there any questions about the nomination process?
No.
That will open the floor to nominations for the office of chairman?
I nominate Ken Ross.
Second that.
Any other nominations for office of chair? Hearing none, I'll declare the floor closed for nominations. All in favor of Ken Ross serving as chair, say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations on your reelection to chair. Move on to vice chair. Same rules apply, and with that, I'll open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Johnny Penner.
Penner.
Mr. Penner.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the floor to nominations. All in favor of Mr. Penner serving as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and I think we'll take a short break to readjust seats.
We'll continue on with the agenda, administrative matters.
Mr. Chairman, under your rules, the planning director has to be annually appointed as the executive secretary to the planning board, so at this time, I think it'd be appropriate for a motion to reappoint James Rhodes as the executive secretary to the planning board.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I think just to be totally clear, if you could take a vote on that motion. I think it's been, a motion's made and seconded, but I'm not sure it was voted on.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
One other item, Mr. Chairman, since this is Mr. Herring's first meeting, we would like to affirm him with the oath that he would step forward, and Tabitha will administer that.
I, Anthony Herring.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Pitt County Planning Board.
The Pitt County Planning Board.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, we'll proceed right on with.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. Next up on your agenda is our development review portion. We've got one preliminary plat titled Otter Creek Section 1. This major subdivision is out on Sharp Point Road. It's west of its intersection with 43. That's in the Falkland Township. It's 14 lots, 11.4 acres. You see there's a vicinity map. Site's located just northwest of Falkland. Here's an aerial view of the property. You can see it's all roadfront lots, no improvements to be made, no roads or anything to be constructed. So the site is not within the 100-year floodplain. There is some floodplain issues further back along the creek on the rear of the property, but where the subdivision's going, there are no issues with floodplain. So rural agricultural zoning. Electricity is Pitt Green Electric Membership Corporation, and Bell Arthur is the water provider. They have some corrections to make on the title block. They had Chicot Township, they just need to correct that to Falkland. Per Section 145B 3A of the Pitt County subdivision ordinance, there is a fire hydrant requirement that needs to be met, so they need to install one there, and that location is to be determined. There's a stream feature located out on the property between the parcels 17850 and 55 and 183, and it's shown on the USGS topo maps. That means it is subject to the repair and buffer rules, so they need to show that buffer on subsequent maps, or they'll need to submit sufficient documentation exempting that feature from the rules. DOT comments were lot 6 and 7, and 11 and 12 shall be served from internal streets. They'll also need to put a non-access easement along the front of those lots along Sharp Point Road. They'll need a 12-foot future right-of-way along the front of lots 7, 8, 12, and 13 for future development of this parcel. The ditch on lot 7 needs to have a drainage easement along that feature. The Pitt Green Electric needs a 15-foot utility easement along the future right-of-way between lots 6 and 7 and lots 11 and 12, and here's an image of where those are at, so you can see there on the side lots of 6 and 7 and the side lots of 11 and 12. A picture of the property just facing directly at it where it's cleared, they just cleared some tobacco off that property. That's down looking toward Spain Bridge Road. That's the opposite way looking toward 43. TRC has heard the plans and recommends conditional approval of it. At this time, I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Does anybody on the board have any questions about?
I did, Mr. Chairman, I did. I wanted to thank staff for the field trip. We did take a field trip, and they were very knowledgeable with the information. Along the Perry, Percy Lee Ellis property, you said that easement is on the first property one.
You're talking about, if you look on the screen, Lone Market Drive, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
There's the ingress egress easement?
Right.
That easement was actually recorded back in 1990 with the maps or with the conveyance of those lots, so it's separate, it's just shown on the map for detailed purposes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, and noticed in adjacent property owners have been notified that the subdivision is being proposed, so.
Okay.
They haven't not received any cause of concern or anything.
Is anybody in the audience got any questions? Okay, watch the pledge of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, have a motion approved. Seconded, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, say nay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for your time tonight. We're gonna discuss a zoning ordinance text amendment that we received from Stephen Cannon to permit accessory buildings as our principal use on individual lots. And the following proposed amendments represent Mr. Cannon's request along with some additional edits that staff made. And you receive the full language of the amendments in your packet. I'll kinda touch on the highlights and the meat and potatoes of the proposed amendments. So the first amendment is to Section 3. It's kind of a language change to bring the zoning ordinance in line with the building code language. And previously, our zoning ordinance had exempted accessory buildings under 144 square feet. Right now, we'll change that language to, or proposing to change that language to accessory buildings with no dimensions greater than 12 feet to match the building code. The next proposed amendment is to our permitted use table 5-1, and that will, that proposed amendment will allow accessory structures to be located on non-contiguous tracks of land without an established principal use. So it's basically a vacant piece of property where the owner does not live on that property or adjacent to the property. The next amendment is to Section 6B, accessory uses, buildings and structures. That amendment is, the text reads that to allow customary accessory structures and buildings on non-contiguous tracks without an established principal use, but make them subject to development standards that we'll go through in a minute. The next amendment is to move the regulations for agricultural accessory buildings to Section 8 as well. Not changing that language, just moving it to a different section of the ordinance. So the general requirements in Section 8 that we're proposing are no more than two accessory structures or buildings on a single non-contiguous tract or parcel, and the combined square footage of those two buildings shall not exceed 1,000 square feet. We're also proposing that electrical service be permitted for lighting and security purposes, however, no plumbing would be permitted. For residential accessory buildings on non-contiguous parcels, we're proposing that these buildings not be used as residential dwellings or for commercial or industrial activities, and they should be located on the parcel to allow for a future residential dwelling. And will require a plot plan when one of those is applied for. For non-residential accessory dwellings or accessory buildings on non-contiguous parcels, we're proposing that these buildings be for storage purposes only, and the primary operation of the use shall not be conducted within that building or upon the property where it's located. And signage in outdoor storage of materials and equipment will also not be permitted. Another amendment that we're proposing is to the definitions, to amend the definition for accessory building and structure to permit the location on non-contiguous tracks. As part of amendment process, the planning board is required to adopt a consistency statement, you know, saying that it's consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. So staff believes that by requiring the development standards for the accessory buildings and structures on non-contiguous parcels, this will minimize the conflicts between incompatible land uses and also allow property owners more flexibility with regarding the use of vacant properties. We also believe that it's reasonable in the public interest because this is an amendment that will address issues that have come up numerous times over the past couple of years, and the proposed development regulations will allow some property owners more options to better utilize their lands while still protecting the adjacent property owners from any possible negative impacts. So staff's recommendation is to forward this draft amendment language to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation. At this time, you can entertain public comments, and then you'll make a recommendation to the commissioners. They're scheduled to hear this request December 21st of this year, and at that time, they'll take action under your request. So I can answer any questions you may have, or you can open up to public comments?
How long has this building we're talking about been there?
I'm sorry?
How long has that building been there that we're talking about? We changed this ordinance on kind of a building?
Their request came from a gentleman who has a building on a non-contiguous track. It's only been there maybe a year or two, to my knowledge.
But this ordinance would cover that building?
It would cover that building and any future buildings.
All right, that's what I want to know. Other board members got any questions or comments? How about Stephen Cannon, would you like to come up? Young man.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to open the public here.
Yeah, I'll open this public here at this time, reference this matter.
We've had this building on the property, like Mr. Mark said, about three or four years, and we've got letters from all of our neighbors, you know, saying that they don't have a problem with the, it's basically a carport being there, and basically what we use it for is to store vehicles and trailers and stuff like that to keep it out of the weather, and that's what we want to move forward with.
Where is it located at?
It's, the property's actually located off of Frog Level Road in the county, on the, about an acre and a half of plot of land.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you. What's the pledge of the board?
Recommend to take staff's recommendation and go forward with it.
Second. Okay, got a motion and seconded, if we follow the staff's recommendation, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, see.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have several informational items in your package tonight, and this starts on page 27 of your agenda. Didn't meet last month, so have several things to kinda go over with you. As we typically do, and especially for Mr. Herring's sake, starting on page 27 and then on page 28 is our departmental work program. We update this every six months, and our first update for this particular fiscal year was back in July when we got our new budget. So on page 27, you'll see some of our major programs and activities that we'll be working on over the upcoming year, and the staff that are assigned to those. I'll go into a little bit more detail on the Candlewick project in a minute, but we, as we've discussed at our previous meeting in August, we have received approval for our regional hazard mitigation plan. That's now officially approved, and the state is getting ready to close out our grant that was used to assist in preparing that plan, so that will be good news for us. The plan is in place for a five-year period, and then we'll need to update it again to stay in compliance with federal guidelines. The Southwest Bypass Corridor Land Use Plan is something that we've started working on internally at a staff level. The city of Greenville is going through its land use plan update. It's extending outside its current extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Herring also serves on the city's planning board and is familiar with that, so we're gonna await the end of the city's planning process before we get ours up and going, just in case there's no, to avoid any confusion between the two planning efforts, so we'll be back in touch with you about that project. The regional park, Alice Keane Regional Park, that's located on County Home Road. We are seeking some funds to improve some areas out in that area. You may be familiar with what used to be the greenhouse property, as we refer to it, where Pitt Community College had its greenhouse facility and horticulture program. We've incorporated that into the district park, and we hope to have that open for some passive recreation. It has some nice shade trees there, be a good addition to the park. We also have some plans for updating our software package for our permitting office, community development administration, as well as some of our efforts in the tenure planned in homelessness here in the county. On the reverse side, on page 28, you'll see some ongoing staff activities, and this includes just like what Brian brought before you tonight, some in-house projects as far as development review for subdivisions, zoning administration, and a host of other items that we're involved with, including some committees. So welcome any questions that you might have about these items. If not, Mr. Chairman, I'll go on through some items that we've been dealing with, with the commissioners over the past couple of months. The first one is a request to reduce the speed limit. I mentioned the County Home property and the regional plan or regional park that's in that area. There's an awful lot, if you travel County Home Road, there's an awful lot of traffic through there. It's a two-lane facility, it's set where there is a turn lane in front of the district park and Farmer's Market. If you head outside the city limits of Greenville, you'll run into a 55 mile an hour speed limit along this area, and we recognize there's a lot of turn movements there, so we've requested that DOT consider reducing the speed from 55 miles an hour to 45 miles an hour, and that would be right before you get to Wintergreen School, and there's just a lot of different activities in that area with the council on aging. We've got our animal shelter, we've got the district park, just a lot of activities there. Those two Wintergreen Schools are home to about 1,500 students, so again, a lot of traffic in that vicinity. Another item, speaking of the County Home property and the district park, on page 31 of your agenda, there was a presentation back earlier this year concerning charters of freedom monuments, and there's a nonprofit group that gets this project started, and basically, they come out and erect monuments that house the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And on your screen, you can kinda see how they're featured in these monuments. It's already in place in a couple of counties here in North Carolina, and our chairman of the Board of Commissioners is really interested in this, and we hope to have this located in the district park. We feel like that's an appropriate place. It'd be a nice gathering place for folks, and somewhat in the vicinity of, if you'll notice on your screen, the main area we're looking at is right in front of the community schools and recreation building, and it's just adjacent to the greenhouse property that I just mentioned, across the street from the Village of Yester Year and the Farmer's Market. So a lot of things going on there. It'd be a good attraction point for folks coming to the area. Couple of other things we brought before you, of course, some recommended subdivision ordinance amendments. Not that we really like them so much, but it was something the state required, and that was the removal of the street maintenance guarantees. So we're working with DOT now, trying to ensure that we've got some other mechanisms in place. The county attorney and myself will be heading to Raleigh in December to talk further with DOT officials about some possible other alternatives for street maintenance in the county. Our 2012 Community Development Block Grant has been officially closed. We had a public hearing with the planning, with the commissioners a couple of months ago. These were actually two households that received replacement housing. Their current facilities were substandard, so we were able to replace some of their existing manufactured housing with new housing. That was one. That's the second one that we were able to replace. I would tell you, our households that we worked with, one family had a disabled child. These were really God sends to these two families, so we were very proud of the outcome for both of them, and too bad we didn't have additional households that qualified for this particular program. The other grant program that we're actively involved with is the Candlewick Sanitary Sewer Project. We were before city council last week to request permission for Greenville Utilities to serve this older subdivision site with sanitary sewer. This development was actually put in place about 45 years ago. The soils in that area somewhat poor for septic systems, and they're having some failures there. The area incorporated into a sanitary district five or six years ago, and have, in turn, the county has received $3 million in funding to help provide sanitary sewer to this area. So city council agreed with extending the sewer, and will be actively working on this project over the next couple of years. A couple of other things, the town of Winterville has taken over, or has requested assistance from the state for their sedimentation control ordinance, and that's been formally turned over to them for their oversight. And the urgent repair program, again, more funding for some of our substandard housing in the county. in the county. We've received funding at the tune of fifty thousand dollars to assist about six households there. Also in your package are our monthly reports for August, September, and October, along with some other items that we've included as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, that's all we have for you tonight.
All right, thank you so much, James, for your update. No questions, anybody have anything on the board to say? We'll stand adjourned.